Evening and welcome to the Holliston School Committee, April 29th, 2021, open session. We are returning from executive session. All members are present and we have our administrators and our student reps. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes from October 8th.
Moved by Dawn?
Seconded by Cynthia.
Any comments or questions? I've never done this the right way. I think I'm supposed to ask for the motion and then are there any questions? Any questions, comments, or edits?
No.
No? Okay, so, sorry, moved by Dawn, seconded by Cynthia?
Yep.
All in favor? Dr. Savard? Yes. Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. March 18th, what?
You forgot me.
I did, I'm so, oh my God, I'm so sorry. Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Raffey, yes. March 18th, 2021, regular session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Dawn.
Cynthia, seconded by Dawn. Any questions, comments, or edits?
No.
Okay. All in favor? Roll call vote, Dr. Savard? Yes. Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. March 30th, 2021, regular session meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Cynthia.
By Dawn, seconded by Cynthia. Any questions, comments, edits? No? Roll call vote, Dr. Savard? Yes. Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. Okay. And communications. Does anyone from the committee have anything to share this week? We're done. I will move to our students. So Julia and Elise, welcome.
Um, yes, hi. So, um, we have, kind of as we're getting into the last month of our senior year and the last couple of months of this, of the school year for everyone, tickets for the senior gala are being sold this week at Goodwill Park from April 28th through May 2nd, as far as I know. Along with that, we had, we have AP exams coming up in the next coming few weeks. And it's a mix of online, on paper, and kind of spread out over a variety of locations to make sure that everybody can get in safely, for those of, for those of us who are taking in-person exams. Along with that, the after-school choruses had our first in-person rehearsals outside this week, which was super exciting. And theater is continuing to rehearse for our show, our first in-person show that we're going to be filming, hopefully, in a couple of weeks. So that will be released soon. And along with that, so I'm, so Julia will talk about being back full in person. I'm still full remote. So my experience has been pretty similar to what it was before, just less students on, because more people are, are, more people are back in school, but it's still been, it's still been good and I've still been able to learn along with the people who are in class.
That's good to hear.
Okay. I'll give updates first, and I can mention what it's like being in person. So, um, starting this week, spring sports have like had tryouts and practices. Nice. Wait, what? Okay. And then, um, on Monday, it's gonna be called, like, senior decision day and like post-graduation plans. So like seniors will wear t-shirts. So I plan to attend University of Delaware and then Elise is gonna mention where she's going.
Yeah, I'm gonna be at Brandeis University.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That is super exciting. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's really wonderful, girls. We must be relieved to be past this milestone.
Definitely.
And then later on, May 7th, we're having a fundraiser. I don't really know too much, but, um, like they're gonna be four to six people in a group. And then I believe there's like a hundred dollar prize for the winning team, which is exciting. And then, so since I'm back full person, it hasn't been too bad. Getting up, you know, it's difficult. The only thing is like lunch is a bit different now because we don't have that hour block in between to go home. But, you know, it's nice to be able to like be in classes with all the students and like actually get to like socialize and do work together, which is nice. Both have a story to tell, your future children, grandchildren, friends. What a story that you'll be able to share. That's great. Thanks, ladies. And central office, Keith, do you have anything this evening? Dr. Patello?
I haven't been able to see it yet, but I, from Doug Lack, we have a summer professionals art studio in the, at the high school studio, 370, and it was on kind of break for a little while. And actually, they started an installation back last spring and then they kicked in again third term. The installation is, is made of one simple material of mask, a painter's tape. And they've created some incredible kind of visual stories using that. So you have to kind of set up a time to go visit, but I, from seeing those, uh, the, the project 370 in the past, there's no question it's gonna be remarkable. So I just wanted to put in a plug for that, for people to check out the, the public art that has been created by our students under the leadership of Doug Lack.
Catherine?
Dr. Patel, how do people check that out if you're not in the high school arena?
Can we do a virtual? So you gotta do a virtual taping of it?
I, yeah, I'm sure he will. They have, they have their website, so I'm sure there will be a visual taping of it. And it would, yeah, primarily be, you know, students and staff, but I'm sure, um, you know, as a school community member, you could set up a time through Doug Lack in the office. It would have to be signed, signed in and stuff.
No, I just, I meant actually for everybody else like that.
Yeah, those, they'll be, yeah, they can come and visit it, but yeah, they'll, they'll, he, he didn't mention the video component, but I'm sure he'll picturesly post it on the, the arts performing arts website that they have.
Okay.
Last year, last year, because this fell like, you know, only weeks after the shutdown, they did a beautiful montage. Remember there being music and, you know, the artwork was coming up on videos, so I don't know what they're planning, but it was so well done last year. I'm sure it'll be something amazing.
Peter, did you have anything else?
I'm good.
Dr. Cusco?
It's funny, I happened to stumble upon that room inadvertently one day since I was trying to navigate the high school. I tried to get in there and visit once in a while. And I happened to inadvertently stumble into that room when Doug Lack and the students were in there working. And I was fascinated because I didn't know it was there because it had been locked up. And I just happened to hit it at the right day when they first started working on it again. So I saw it when they were in process and I'm, I'm excited to see the end results here. So that'll be fun to see. And then, you know, the girls from the high school, Julia and Elise, you alluded to some of the events to come. And it's been great that we've been able to have some sports events. You know, none of my own children have played many, many sports, but my, my four children also were very involved in the arts and music. So I've attended many of those types of events as a parent. And, you know, that's certainly been something that we've been waiting with bated breath to get to see some of those events more live or to some respect that you're doing it as a person, in-person group. So Principal Bottomley had shared with me the upcoming events that you started to speak to tonight. I won't get too detailed about it, but I cannot wait to see some of the results of the hard work that seniors and underclassmen are putting into this end-of-year, last-minute event that we haven't been able to have so far. So that's really exciting news. And I wanna commend the girls for their hard work and to be able to go into such great colleges even amidst a pandemic is very exciting. And hopefully, you'll be able to attend college fully vaccinated and not have the worries that freshmen had this year. So I think you'll have better times to come as well. And then the only other quick update I wanted to give was around pool testing. I quickly was able to send out a message shortly before tonight's meeting to just let people know we are seeing a slight surge, which is not unexpected. I mean, after every break, we've seen this happen because our students have been very well protected when they're in school all day. We have structured learning, we're, we're wearing our face coverings, we're sanitizing, we're doing all the things we need to do in school. And we really have not seen transmission, as I've said time and time again, within the school environments because we have the face coverings and everything in place. However, with the break last week, and I do know that, you know, there's been a lot when, when people have unstructured time and are looking for things to do, it's not as easy to continue to maintain those mitigation strategies that we expect our staff to reinforce in school with students and our staff. So we did get seven cases this week, six at the high school and one at Miller, which is, you know, not exciting news. But the good part of it is that one case at Miller and one case at the high schools were asymptomatic cases that were strictly found through our pool testing. And then immediately, once we got the pool results, which is coming back very quick, our nurses at the high school and our nurses at Miller took that pool group and did the antigen testing, which is a 15-minute quick rapid test, which is why we have that in the building as well. And then within that short timeframe, they were able to identify the one positive asymptomatic case at the high school and the one positive asymptomatic case at Miller School. And then those individuals were asked to quarantine and go home, which is exactly why pool testing is such a good mitigation tool. It is completely underutilized, which I'm disappointed about. I've tried to encourage it. I've had lots of questions as to why have we had to put close contacts out so frequently in sports or in other settings? If we had more pool testing, we'd be less likely to have to resort to as much close contact tracing and as, because we could identify someone from a pool testing right away and remove them before they could potentially contagious, be contagious to somebody else. And I've been asked why one of our sports teams had to be close contacts because when we don't have pool testing, we have no other resource in hand. Medfield Schools is 80% of their student body is pool testing. So if they have a case, they have those results and they've already been able to rule out that these people would not have symptoms or, or be a positive case. And then they don't have to quarantine necessarily because they have that pool testing once or twice a week. We don't have that resource except for the 30 to 40% in each building that have voluntarily done it. So I, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I've been saying this every time I send something out, but truly those pool testing results that we got and then we're able to antigen test is exactly why we need people to volunteer for that pool testing. It's not too late to sign up. And then we can literally get people out of the building if necessary to quarantine quickly. And we don't have to identify as many potential close contacts through lack of having antigen and pool testing in place. So that's, it's for my high horse tonight, but I just, I can't speak to it enough.
Okay. This evening, I did have on the, initially on the agenda, reports from the principals on school updates. We are moving that as they have been diligently working to reopen the schools. And I guess at this, this is the right opportunity to congratulate them and thank them for all of their efforts. You know, the high school, middle school, I can speak to where I'm driving by every day. You know, it has not gone, gone unnoticed, all of the work and efforts to make sure that our kiddos are getting that much closer to normalcy. So thank you to everyone, the Holliston Police Department. There are multiple officers who I am seeing every morning at different locations around the campus and downtown. So thank you to all of them. You know, the teachers and staff, it's, I, I've heard how happy people are to finally be back together again for the five days. So thank you to all of them. And we will have the principals come and visit us at a later, a later time. Did anyone have any comments about school reopening? Because I know.
Just saying, I just say one thing that, because I, that was, I, I went right to the negative, which I don't like to do, but I just was concerned today when I saw these cases start to surge. Monday and Tuesday, Monday, I was able to get, start the day at the middle school to see the students shortly after they entered and get into most of the classrooms and the high school on Tuesday to see how things were going there. I was there at lunchtime, so I saw the new changes with, you know, more students in the building. But I have to say, the overall theme at both buildings was the enthusiasm of the students and the staff. I had many staff stop me to tell me how happy they were to see the kids in the building. And, you know, while it still looks a little bit unusual, it's just to see, you know, you can feel the energy that we're getting closer to some, someone's abnormality. And I, the staff and students alike are really excited to be there. And this, there are things to work out. Traffic was a little bit of a nightmare. I talked to Chief Stone yesterday. He was putting on some extra support for that. So we're all working together and I have to just thank all the staff, teachers, administrators, all of the community support that we're getting because it, as I've said all year, it takes a village and the village has kept school open since September 16th. If you asked me this in August, I kept saying, if we can get the first month and keep kids in school and develop those relations, the second month, here we are, and we've been open all year barring a few small closures in certain buildings. But it's, it's been amazing to be part of this. And like the students, we will all have stories to tell about this year to come.
And by no small feat of your leadership, Dr. Cusco, so thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
And that, and one other thing that we should probably plug in right now is we need volunteers, especially at Robert Adams Middle School for lunchtime. So parents of Ram students, please check your email from the last update. There is a link that you can sign, sign up for a slot. We really need more supervision so that students have opportunity to eat outside more. So that's really a, a big deal. And, and you know, I think Mr. Jordan and Mrs. Beatty are, are literally, that is all they're doing for however long lunchtime is. So they really could use some supportive of some adults. So please, please consider that if, if you have any time. Lisa, were you gonna, I saw you move your.
Oh, no, I would just say, yeah, thank you, the same thank yous that everyone else is saying. Thank you to the teachers, all the staff, the paraprofessionals, the administrators, all the administrators here, Dr. Cusco, Dr. Patello, Mr. Boudet. I mean, it's, I am still amazed that we got through this year. I was really thinking we would be closing at Thanksgiving and the fact that we are able to, to open up is a credit to everyone who works in the schools. And it's amazing, so thank you.
Lisa, while you're unmuted, do you have anything to report for the communications subcommittee?
No, we have no newsletter this week.
And Cynthia, policy?
Yeah, we need to reschedule another meeting. We had to sideline our last meeting.
Budget?
Um, yes, so on Thursday of last week, in '26, we voted to approve Dr. Cusco's budget. That, the number for that was $37,998,523, which represents a 5.57% increase year-over-year relative to the FY '21 budgets. So that's the standing figure at the moment unless something changes. As for upcoming meetings, et cetera, we are holding a town hearing on the budget on April 6th, which is next Wednesday.
May 6th.
Sorry, what, May 6th? Thank you. Oh, I guess I'm just wishing there's more time in the calendar. Thank you, Andy.
Next Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Yep. It's, so it's a, that'll be, there'll be a Zoom link posted if anybody's interested in attending.
And Andy, anything on superintendent evaluation?
We pressed pause while we were waiting for our schools to kind of get fully reopened, where there's a lot of other details that need to be worked out or pretty important. So we're gonna start, we're gonna resume that process and I'm gonna send something out tomorrow to talk about what the new tentative timeline's gonna look like.
All right. Dr. Cusco, do you have anything under COVID update at this point?
No, I think I covered it under my earlier comments, but I also will be sending out my end-of-the-week updates. And we'll have the dashboard updated with the new cases. And if there's any other information, it'll going out to parents tomorrow.
Thank you. And, okay, news, new business. So it is time to vote and establish that last day of the 2020, 2021 school year. So in your packets, Dr. Cusco sent us a memo. In accordance with our school committee policy E, B, C, D, school was closed on the following days originally scheduled as school days due to inclement weather conditions, Thursday, October 8th, 2020, and Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. The last day of school was originally listed for Monday, June 21st. We do need to move that in order to ensure that Holliston students attend school for the state-manded 170 days. So with that comes the recommendation that we move the last day of school to Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021, as the last day of the 2020, 2021 school year for grades K through 11. Preschool's a little bit different and seniors, you will have been graduated by then, which is very exciting for you. So June 23rd will be a half-day for students and a full day for teachers. Are there any questions or comments before I entertain a motion to approve that date? All right. At this time, I'll entertain a, a motion to approve Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021, is the last day of the 2020, 2021 school year.
Moved by Dawn?
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Andy. Roll call vote, Dr. Savard? Yes. Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. Great. Thank you. And now we have, Dr. Cusco is going to make an announcement about administration and a search that's coming up.
And I actually was inaccurate. I forgot that I did have a very important COVID update that I will be putting in the newsletter tomorrow, but this literally came in very recently today. So as you know, we had got, we had finally received approval for that regional collaborative to get our staff, students, community vaccinated through the various towns, through President Spilka's office and Senator Carol Dykman's office. So that finally happened, as you know. It happened a little bit late to help all of our teachers. I will say though, our HR analyst, Lisa DeLuzia, was able to schedule some of our, a small number of staff to get vaccinated. And then on the town side, the same happened with Jackie Weiner. So we have been able to start that ball rolling for people that weren't able to get their own appointments. But the most recent news that I received today is that we are going to be able to offer that same vaccination process for our high school students who are over 16. So I will be sent, the principal will be sending out that information as well. There is a Zoom presentation tomorrow that our nurse lead will be attending with the regional collaborative, but it is going to be happening on May 8th. So literally, this is hot off the press. I haven't even had time to assimilate, but that's gonna be very exciting for, news for our students. Our seniors can get that, our juniors in many cases. So we will get that information out so that parents will have to fill out some, there's a link to a permission if they're not 18 and so forth. So that is exciting news to come. I'll allude to it tomorrow and then the principal will actually send out the specific information to that, that, those age populations in the, in the next couple of days. So Cynthia?
Do you know, is there like a limit on the number of vaccines that you can do? Is it like the first 100 students that you get or is it?
I don't know the limit because that's, I think they're gonna talk about that at the Zoom meeting tomorrow. They'll probably tell us how many each, I think it might be proportionally by town, but then it probably will be by, if one town doesn't use their allotment, then it can go to, you know, so they'll tell us more information tomorrow. So I will ask Lynn to give me an update and I'll see if I can get some information about that.
Thank you.
Dawn?
Um, Susan, just to follow up on that, I know that Pfizer had applied for emergency use authorization on April 9th for the vaccine for children ages 12 to 15. It'll be three weeks tomorrow. That's about how long it took when they originally applied back in November. People are hopeful it might be available for our middle schoolers and our, our younger high schoolers, possibly even, you know, early, mid-May. Is that something you could ask about too? That if at all possible, would they also be able to make it available to the 12 to 15 crowd, assuming it is approved?
I will ask Lynn if she can try to address that question. I mean, it may have to go back to the DPH, but at least she can put that out there. So whoever's in the overall contact for our group can maybe bring that back to them.
Thank you.
And then I'll return back to my initial news that I was going to discuss today. As you know, Dr. Patello is very excited, but I'm sure with mixed emotions, we'll be shortly leaving our district to become the new superintendent in Sharon. And I'm sure we'll be able to continue our professional relationships as superintendents together and we'll be checking in with him as he transitions. And we want to support his transition and make it as smooth for everyone as possible. But it is getting late in the school year and we are very, we, we have a very urgent need to try to fill the assistant superintendent position so that we can help. Peter and I talked about the fact that he wants to also help as he would transition our new person in. And the issue we may have is if we don't get that person chosen soon, that person may have to give a 60 or more day notice to their contract, which could put them not being able to start July 1st, which is a likely possibility. But we'll, you know, we'll do our best to try to onboard them and come up with a plan with whatever sending district is releasing that person and we'll come up with a plan. But in the meantime, we have to move at a very fast pace. And I did reach out to a consultant, it's Marion, Marion Consulting Firm. It's a relatively new consulting firm, but I do know the consultants of that group I have known professionally for some time. And Dr. Gary Maestas is the consultant that will be running our search. And it's a very reasonable, a lot of hours being put into it, very reasonable cost for us. And he's going to take considerable hours to both put together the, he'll put together all the interviews. He'll reach out to all of our candidates. The subcommittee will be put together very shortly. So I, I literally just signed the document and got that off to him this morning. And we'll be starting the ball rolling as soon as tomorrow. Communication will be going out either tomorrow or Monday to put together a subcommittee to vet our candidates. My thinking at this point, I kind of went through what the makeup would look like. It's, you don't want to get the group too large, but you want to have a good community support of stakeholders that would work closely with the assistant superintendent. But ultimately, I would be the one that would seek the finalists and I would do the final interviews. But in the meantime, I will not be involved in the initial process, which is typical. And the subcommittee that I am thinking of is that we would likely have an elementary and a secondary principal. We will have two of our central office leaders, our business manager and our student sports director, to make up four administrators. And then I would like to have at least one staff member from each of our buildings. In many cases, a teacher would make the most sense because they do a lot of the curriculum and PD work with the assistant superintendent role. But if not, I'm willing to accept a volunteer, you know, just so that we have at least one representative from each building. So that would make up the next group of totaling eight. And the final group would be, I'm thinking, two school community members and also one high school student and one community member slash parent. It would be very nice, since we're doing so much work on social justice and equity, if potentially someone with that background or maybe a member of diverse Holliston, you know, it's a, I'll see who volunteers, but I'm just saying with all the work we're trying to do with equity and social justice, someone from that lens and background might be really helpful to this process. Because as you know, Dr. Patello has started a lot of work in that, in that area. And the new assistant superintendent, we would be helping to continue that work and really move forward with it. So that would make up a total of 12, which is as large as I'd want to go. But I think it would be a good representation for our district.
Cynthia?
So just in line with that, I'm wondering whether or not we can make sure that we have each of the programs represented too among the teachers, since we're dealing with curriculum specifically, to have somebody from Montessori, French, and traditional. I don't know if that's even possible, but just to have, be mindful of all the different programs we have and how that fits into curriculum.
Yes, and how. Yes. And how, when I send that out, that's what I would want. And the people that reach out, I'm not gonna ask them to do a whole, you know, background check for this, but I would want to have sort of just a brief paragraph of a what, what you think you have to bring to this process, what, how, how your background would fit this process, because that's what I'd want to see the, ideally, people that have a strong, have done work in curriculum and have understanding of what the work has been like in here in Holliston. So that would be sort of the criteria that I would use to try to assess who might fit best for that work and, and yes, those programs as well.
Dawn?
Um, thank you, Susan, for all of that. I appreciate it. Um, I, I was thinking in terms of, of the group. Um, I, I know, um, when we've reached out this summer to have parent volunteers in working on what a school reopening would look like, I, I believe we had many people who volunteered and wanted to be part of it. And I think you may find um, uh, something similar happening in terms of, of parent volunteers. So I, my only suggestion would be, your proposal is 12, why not get to an odd number? Because you will be voting on whether or not these things are going forward. So why not two parents would be the only thing I would add to that.
Happy to consider. Let's see who I get back volunteers, because I'm also, I have to adjust the timeline because we are starting, supposed to be starting today. Um, maybe I'm meeting with a consultant to go over the timeline and change his proposal a little bit as well. So as soon as we can get that out, I would want them to see what the time commitment and how fast it's gonna move. Because right now, he's got one of the meetings scheduled for May 20th, or I think that was an interview night. And I know we have school committee, so that rules out Keith um, and, and anyone else that's on that committee to even be here. So that's not gonna work, right? So I have to adjust that. But I want them to understand that if you are saying you're going to volunteer, this is what it means. It's gonna be a quick, fast pace and a lot of time.
Got it. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, school committee members, if you're interested, um, please send a message to me and Susan. Um, and we'll work something out. Okay, great. All right. One of the, um, thank you for that. And again, Peter, congratulations. We know this is a very exciting time for you. Um, you know, as a parent always is, it's great to see our kids grow and fly out of the nest and, and, and move on, but very bittersweet. Um, but congratulations. It's very exciting and I'm, I'm, I'm thrilled that, um, that, you know, we can share this exciting news. Would you like to say-
Thank you, Stacey. Certainly, uh, it's been 14 years and they've been awesome, every one of them. And, you know, this last year has been an odd year, but I'm so proud of the work that's been done by, you know, our administrators and our teachers and our entire staff and, 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 and the work that you've done to support it as well. And so I, I'm looking forward to this new challenge in Sharon, but I'll miss uh, of this, uh, the, everyone in Holliston a tremendous amount.
You will, you will, but we'll stay in touch with you. Thanks, Peter. Finally, uh, so one of the pieces of information we've been waiting to hear about is our um, application, our statement of interest with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Um, they had moved their decision timeline from December of 2020 to um, mid-April 2021. And so we did receive a letter. Um, and however you want to look at this, fortunately, unfortunately, we have not been asked to participate in the program for this coming year. Um, and we, we sort of expected that. We knew when we first um, sent in an application that we would probably have to um, apply for a couple of years. So this is not something that we um, you know, was not unexpected. We were sort of anticipating this. Um, that being said, now we need to uh, move forward and um, Susan um, has the opportunity to fill out another application. Um, and I believe it's due June 25th. Um, Susan, do you want to talk a little bit about what your thoughts are and?
Well, I was going to be a little facetious when Andy was talking earlier about the superintendent evaluation, because as you know, I came in as your interim. So um, at that time, as an interim, I would not be completing goals. But if I had put my goals forth in September or October, which is typical, my goal would be to safely support, to develop, help develop a plan and facilitate a plan that would safely allow students and staff to remain in school for the full year. Check? Done. So um, you know, in hindsight, that goal would have been very easily, I, I don't know if I would have put in that goal forward, because I, that was, I never would have thought we could be here, right? But um, that being said, you know, we will get that. I, I know Keith will support me with that, because you've been here through this whole process and I'm lucky to have him as my right-hand person to continue on with. And we will get that done. Uh, we will get it in by June 25th, as I'm hoping the next couple of weeks, we can get through some of this heavy lifting. As every time I think we finally can take a breath, you know, something new comes and, which is typical, but there's usually a little bit of downtime. There's no downtime this year. But yes, I will um, review the previous SOI and I don't think we'll need to make too many changes, but certainly we'll update that and get it back in a, in a timely manner.
Questions from the committee on the SOI? Any questions?
Is it the same process where after we kind of accept our resolution, it goes over to the uh, or um, town hall?
Yeah. Yeah. So Travis, I, Travis and John are, I, I sent it to them that they're aware that they'll be expected to do that. Yes.
They have us tentatively on their um, their agenda for our May 17th. Ann Louise?
Um, I, I know some of this has been said, but I just wanna, I want to thank you for making this a priority, even in the context of this current year, because I do think it's a really important message that we send the state each year, even if we are unlikely to get approved, even this year again. Um, and the consistency in the application year over year sends an important message that this is something we are sincerely interested in. Um, and I'm so hopeful that this left board as well will support um, the submission of this SOI to the state again. I think this is our fourth, this will be the fourth year. I'm not sure we actually submitted. There was one, because wasn't there one year in between that we weren't able to?
Yes.
Yes. And I think that's really important. Like, you know, there was a skip year in there. Um, so I'm really glad that-
Just the first year though, Ann Louise.
Yeah, but well, it was a hard first year. So in any event, um, this is a critical initiative and, and, you know, maybe we'll see something come out of it in another year or two. So.
Not, and not to be Debbie Downer, but the hard part, as Keith reminds me as well, is that you start fresh every year. So even though we've been in this for that long, you don't kind of move up the list. It's like every year it's a start over. So it's frustrating in that way, but you hope that it's gonna stick at that, you know, because it really is an important thing for Holliston.
Well, every year is a new evaluation. So the state has a new set of applications and ours will always be looked at in the context of other districts applying. Um, but they were very clear on their site visit that um, if you aren't approved one year, the fact that you apply again the next year, like they become more familiar with you as a district, more familiar with your needs. And that does send a clear message to them that this is a priority for the community. So
For sure.
I think it does matter. So-
Yeah, and I think the tenacity and the long-term, you know, the longevity of applying, as you say, it, it shows that it's a long-term wait for that and that becomes more of a need each year too.
So thank you. And I hope, I hope it's uh, supported when we get to the stuff.
Yeah.
Um, Dr. Cusco, did they request any additional or either, or Mr. Boudet, did they request any other additional information that are, think, did they have any suggestions for us as to anything else that they were looking for? No? Okay.
And they just voted April 20th, was it Keith? Or no, maybe it was a little sooner than that. Very recent, very recent.
It was at the board meeting. I think it was April 14th is the day I have in my head. It was something like that. Um, but no, they don't give you like any hints or stuff like that. They, they, it's a very even playing field. Um, you know, and they evaluate it based on the criteria from that particular year and those particular board members. Um, you know, and there is no, again, that's apparently I'm bringing Debbie Downer out, but um, uh, apparently that, you know, they, by looking at it freshly, eat fresh, new, fresh each year, if somebody who was their first submission was an absolute critical need, you know, they would, they, they should go ahead of a district that isn't as critical. So.
Thank you.
Um, before I actually entertain the motion, I need to read uh, based on, is this actually a state law or just the MSBA rule, Keith? Um, in any case, I need to read this um, that needs to be part of the motion. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on April 29th, 2021, prior to the statement of interest, also known as SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the town of Holliston, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, have voted to authorize the superintendent of schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the statement of interest form, which will be dated May 2021, for Holliston High School, located at 370 Hollis Street, Holliston, Mass. 01746, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority area number five, replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. And priority area number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Holliston to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Is there a motion to approve um, to have Susan submit this statement of interest?
So moved by Ann Louise.
Seconded by- Seconded by Lisa. Roll call vote. Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi? Yes. Dr. Cusco, Mr. Boudet? Have fun writing. Good luck. No, thank you. Okay. Um, our next, oh, no, I have some warrants for you. Cynthia, just want to let you know, I wrote them very quickly after I signed them and I did not break out um, COVID costs. So tonight, I'm just giving you the full-
But Keith did.
But Keith did. Keith did, but I told him he didn't, not to stress. Okay, so the following warrants have been uh, been signed. There's a school bill warrant in the amount of 132,860 and 82 cents. School bill warrant in the amount of 141,503 and 91 cents. School bill warrant in the amount of 145,690 and 65 cents. A student activity replenishment bill in the amount of 8,130 dollars and 10 cents. Cafeteria's bill in the amount of 21,270 dollars, 47 cents. School warrant, school bill warrant in the amount of 371,718 dollars and 36 cents. Cafeteria bill in the amount of 20,941 dollars and 54 cents. School bill warrant in the amount of 54,592 dollars and 13 cents. Those have all been signed. Our next meeting is scheduled for next Thursday, May 6th, 2020, 7:00 PM. We will open the meeting with our uh, state mandated um, public hearing of the school budget for which will be brought forth to town meeting. Town meeting this year is scheduled for Monday, May 10th, 2021. At this time, if we don't have any other questions, it will be my pleasure to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Andy. All in favor, roll call vote. Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi? Yes. It is 7:58. This meeting is now adjourned. Good night, everybody. Have a great week. We'll see you next week.
Thank you.